Good evening, everybody. It is five thirty. I'm gonna wait just a second. I have a forum here with Councilman Howard, Merja and Driakos and Councilman Kukoli is on the phone quick like so I'm gonna give her a couple of seconds to clean up and your phone call and we'll get underway. So hang with us, please. Thank you. Okay, folks, we'll go. We'll get underway and let Councilman Kukoli join us when she's ready. We'll call the meeting for the September twentieth City Council, City of Shoto meeting to order. Those present will stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. As previously mentioned, here at City Halls, myself, Kirk From Felder is here, Councilman Merja, Councilman D, Councilman Howard. In the audience is Rich Lesky and Mel from the county, Melia Martinson. Councilman Kukoli is in the building, but on another line, so. First thing on the agenda tonight would be the approval of the minutes from six September. Motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Merja. Changes, corrections? And so. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They will stand approved, dispresented. I know you haven't left the state yet, so what's your plans there, Councilman? When are the Friday night lights calling you to Idaho?
Thirty through the second.
Of September?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? No. Tom? Let's jump ahead to reports for a quick second and we'll come back. Mel, you have a copy of Public Works in front of you?
Aye.
So we'll we'll jump to Mike's Public Works report start off. And one of the most interesting things on here is the influence flow into the wastewater facility. Looking at the average compared to where we are, we are well, we're below average. We have been well below average for the first eight and a half months and we're about average now for September as our average number has stayed static where the previous years has come down to where we are now. So it's kind of nice to see that we're making progress. The new sewer lines help. And water levels have been low, so that's, I guess, come spring will be the test if we get high, if we get high water again.
That and that would have been my, my concern is that these, these levels with the amount of drought that we have in the non-saturation of ground would be unfortunate. Hopefully they're not falsely positive, but like you said, next springtime will tell.
Yeah, because that part of town, that northern side of town where we always had had past issues, just got the new lines in it. So let's knock on woods that we're there. Levi Warheim, who's our wastewater operator, attended the Advanced Water System Seminar over at Yellow Bay. And it's tough to smile and giggle, but Shoto and the city of Conrad tied for having the best sludge samples.
What were the criteria?
I have no idea. You know, anytime you got, you're up there number one in sludge. I think it's gotta be a good thing in the wastewater world. You tell me, Mr. Plumber. I'm happy.
Yeah, I'm gonna let that one go. You wouldn't like.
Alrighty, I'm just.
I can add to it.
Yeah. We did have one of the anaerobic mixers go down, but between Levi and BJ, they both got the problem diagnosed, got the repairs and the plant was back to one hundred percent.
Maybe you don't have an answer on it. So I talked with Levi last night, the way he described the problem, do we need to like look at the rest of the system for those kind of issues?
I don't, Mike doesn't seem to think so and it was a one-off.
Okay.
And we truly hope it wasn't one-off.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Me too, but.
Yeah. But this is the first time it came up and.
And the plant's been online four years?
Twenty sixteen, six years?
Six years.
Yeah, six years.
Oh, gosh, twenty sixteen.
Yep. All of our water samples have been good. Water loss remains high, though it is difficult again. Several repairs, one recent repair was significant. Is that the one? Were you in on that one, Steve?
At home. At home.
Did they finally find it?
Yeah, it's an old service line. But we also found when we were digging around over there, a storm drain that runs kitty corner across underneath that building. That not on any records, nothing.
Sure, it wasn't someone's bunker?
No, it's it's a storm drain.
So that that was the one? If I remember right, that's the one that used to run out of the shop there?
There's no record of it in any of the city's databases whatsoever.
Trying to remember who was telling me about it. Who owned it before Pearson's? Whoever had a Chrysler dealership in there?
Was Taylor's, several, it was Taylor's, but Taylor did forever had the Dodge dealership there.
Yeah.
So the water audit for the month of August showed sixteen thousand gallons produced or purchased or produced ten thousand, ten million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred twenty sold. Gallons lost, about six point six three million gallons for a thirty-nine percent loss. But if you look back since start of the year, January, that's a thirty-two percent cut in lost water.
So. But we're and we're pumping more, so maybe the system being under higher pressure is a good thing.
I also think that there's, we're starting to get newer meters out there too. And they could be metering more.
We need to go through our water this summer and last summer because of the drought.
Yeah. So it's all good. I'm glad to do that. And Mike says they're continuing to look for leaks and make repairs. Best paving some small sections of street and they're going to be painting parking lines. You can see out here in front. It's like made these extra wide pickup. What do you call them? Pickup spots? Because the standard parking spot is ten feet wide. These are eleven. Those of you who've been down by the weather beater, you'll see that there's a couple of compost pile, compost and mulch pile down there and they're available for Shoto residents to, for free. And again, normal mix of everyday tasks, water shut offs, meter repaired, water sampling, garbage trees, line location requests and other service line issues and mechanical repairs. Sorry that Public Works have been on a roll. They've been doing very good. Please stay, see how they've been going. From thirty-one eight, our sheriff report, five traffic stops, two citations, seven warnings, no arrests. But there were fifty-four calls in Shoto from August one to thirty-one August. And that doesn't include the area outside the city limits, but are within roughly what they would say the jurisdiction of the city. Jen pretty much matches up dog complaints. She's got two dog complaints. Sent her another one today, yesterday. And I would tell folks out there, if you have a dog complaint, please take the time to come fill out the form. But if you can take a picture with your phone of the upset animal and provide that with us when you do your complaints, it makes it that much easier for Jen to get it prosecuted and taken care of. Because without it, somebody could say, well, it wasn't my dog and we are not, there's no way we can issue citation or proceed. So I know in the haste of all that stuff and worried about a dog being around you and coming at you, if you can, take a picture, please, and help provide that with us. Case load from city court. Speeding, dog at large and a nuisance dog were the cases that were filed, all three in the city. And they match up again with the previous month's reports from the sheriff's office in there. Finance Officer Rogers is out today. She's got some, taking care of some family stuff. She had some time home with her son and they took Ryan back to his job stuff today, so she took the day off, but we are sitting where we're supposed to be as far as all of our stuff in the finance office goes. And Tom? Talk to me about reports.
I had two months work that I felt I forgot to do the last month. What's one of your most offensive and reciting reviews? Like I'm talking to people right now about some different projects, maybe through small projects. Nothing big at the moment, except for the wagon wheel still poking along.
Okay.
But they're making some even more forward.
Okay. Sounds good. Councilman Merja?
I don't really have anything. Yeah, I've been keeping my head down and so haven't fun having.
Councilman D?
Tonight is the Cub Scout recruitment. They are over at the scout hall, started about fifteen minutes ago and will be there till six thirty. Can't make it tonight. If you want to put your kids in Cub Scouts or Scouts BSA, which is Cub Scouts is five to ten and a half and then Scouts BSA is ten and a half up to eighteen. You can reach out to me or Sandra. Reach me on Facebook or Sandra is at seven eight eight four three six five and text is preferred. We'd love to put your kids in the program and get involved with that. We had our first drawing for trip of the month last night for the Lions Club.
I didn't know.
Did not win. It was Mark Corte. Congratulations to him.
I didn't win the gun either.
Nope. Want to get a ticket there? The trip of the month tickets are now discounted at one thirty-seven fifty. Get them on shottelions.club on our website and or reach out to a Lions Club member. There's only a few left.
Okay. Councilman Howard?
I don't know if we should talk about rumors, but I think this one is of interest.
Okay.
Kelly's.
This is all, yep.
And that's the Big Sky Hotel next to it.
With the, I've not been able to confirm that the Big Sky Hotel is sold next to it, but Senate's Harvest Estates or Mount the Co-op did buy Kelly's and it's going to become an unmanned car patrol station for the time being while they look at how to deal with it in the future. They have several employees who live in the community that will keep it up. And Matt, you know, take care of the paper and things like that for the time being. Hopefully at some point in time to look at a convenience store setting on that end of town.
Yeah, so the rest of the rumor was the Big Sky Hotel would be the convenience store location. That's just the rumor going around. So I mean, my concern with that was like it's more than a hotel. It's kind of like some more.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So back to our housing issue.
Yeah, a loss of something like that would be another blow to the community right now with housing being what it is. I don't know how we withstand it. Nothing else?
I fixed the water leak too, but I'll tell you.
As I jump into the marriage report, first question comes from last Thursday. Was it our roundtable? Rich Lesky's in the stands. Rich, the Chamber of Commerce at our roundtable last Thursday, we were looking at things to do for next year's Fourth of July weekend. And we were curious if you would put together a car show on that weekend, on that Saturday possibly?
Are you talking Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday, yeah. Sunday. Got great and everything else. Sunday night, do a, a Sunday afternoon, Sunday evening, do a car show. We looked at trying to, we're trying to put together a drive-in movie type setting with the car shows. We talked about different venues in town showing different car movies. We talked about Main Street having a Dodge block, a Chevy block, a Buick block and and doing things like that. Your car shows are very, very well attended. And you've got a pretty devout devoted following to those things and we decided to be kind of a something to help us kick off that Fourth of July week from the Chamber of Commerce standpoint.
Yeah, I could, I could feel it out and definitely set up. I don't know how many people would show up. I think it was Wayne Rock tried that one on Field of Dreams on the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Quite a few people showed up.
Patty was at the meeting and that's, yeah, she was reminiscing about that.
Yeah. Now, would you guys want a fee paid to come in or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We just want people to bring cars.
Yeah.
Park on Main Street, maybe catching a movie, see if we can put some stuff together in some other locations. And just fill that gap on that Sunday evening.
Yeah. Now, Saturday wouldn't have been good because I'm having a memorial for my mother.
Yeah.
Having a lot of people come up on a Saturday since Fourth of July, the on a Tuesday. She, she's all for the last three years, she's had a get together for weenies on the Fourth of July. So it's gonna be a.
There was a wiener dog, there was a wiener dog race mentioned for a possible thing.
But yes, I will, I will definitely set something up whether I be the one that shows up or.
We'll keep this in the loop because we'll have the, 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 the chamber is behind this and we would do whatever from the chamber standpoint, from, you know, our standpoint. It's the kickoff to the week. And like I say, with, with, we talked about the Fourth of July falling in the middle of, you know, on a Tuesday. It's, it would be something to kick it off. Yeah.
Yes, and my normal show would be the week later.
Yeah.
But I will probably go ahead and make it that, that day so that my followers would come up that day.
We would be very supportive and helpful in any way we could.
Yes. Talking about the idea of, you know, having different movies at different venues. People had ability to project a movie. Maybe it's some of the vacant buildings down town, maybe outside somewhere. Haven't talked with Roxy yet about what they could.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So.
And I do have quite a few DVDs, but I'm, I'm not sure if you would have to get permission.
I think if you don't charge.
If you don't charge, we would be fine.
Okay.
Well, you know, we're talking about having car related movies showing in different locations, whether it be cannonball run, whether it be cars for kids, whether, you know, Christine for the horror freaks out there and things along those lines, just.
Yeah, something that is in the lower rating, not our rate.
Yeah, something that would.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few followings for a couple of movies that do have a little bit of bad stuff in it. You know, but we can figure something out, yeah.
Just something to think about, Rich. We, you're, when that came up, it's like, yeah, Rich would be the guy we have to talk to. We know how to track him down on a Tuesday.
Well, even, even the, the inflatable screens aren't.
Yeah.
They're pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Actually, they were really on sale at Samplow.
There you go.
Last week, you know, inflatable one.
We thought about at the park, taking some classic cars around the band shell and hanging one in the band shell and doing that as well as a venue. So just something to think about. So thank you, Rich, for considering.
I'll start feeling everybody out and make sure there'll be locks and people will be interested in it.
Councilman Kukoli?
Sorry.
What do you got for us? Any updates from your part of the world? Before we didn't vote on it yet, there are no reports.
No, I don't have any updates.
Okay. I have one for you that you might find intriguing. Thursday at one P M. Northwestern Energy will be here with their electrical engineer to go around town with us and look at areas where we would like some additional streetlights. So if you have locations in mind for where you'd like a street light or some additional street lighting and you can't be here at one, write them down, drop them off at City Hall so that I can take Jess around and show them where we're looking at.
That's this coming Thursday?
Yeah, this coming Thursday, yeah. As in day after tomorrow.
I did see in the Sun River Electric Cooperative magazine that they, that World Montana Magazine they put out, that there was a golf tournament, a golf course and that the money raised went to new Christmas light preparations. That was nice.
Yep, we got thirty.
That was at the Fairfield course, not our.
Yeah.
Okay. They had it at the Fairfield course, but the money.
But money came to the chamber, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
And we nice segue there, Councilman. We're working on where to get the lights, the additional bulbs, how we want to go about doing that. Do we want to restring some of those snowflakes completely with rope lights? We talked about that. Or do we go out and try and find the LED lights to replace the ones that are on there?
Some, the guts of it, more than just lights.
Yeah, some of them need to be completely rewired. Yeah.
So you've got two new brands to rewire some you know, like colored lights.
Anything else? I'll finish up mine and we'll go back and take care of the new business. I want to throw out a very happy ninety-ninth birthday to Bob Knoc today. It is ninety-nine years for him and Bob has been a fixture here in the Lions Club and throughout our community forever. You can mail him a card for benefits to Town Medical Center at nine fifteen fourth street Northwest for happy ninety-ninth birthday. I didn't want to forget that. Other than that, things have been very well. As I said, we're, we're, you're gonna see Public Works out painting. We're gonna be doing some work on Main Street as well. The M D O T provided us with the paint to take care of this, the lines on Main Street, so we will begin doing that as time prohibits and weather.
Funding for.
What's that?
And funding for man hours?
No, but if we did, they didn't give us payment when you're done.
Isn't there a budget surplus?
Yeah, we've been up at the airport as well. Ran the sweepers across the runway the other day and grew up doing the perimeter fence because we do do the maintenance up there. We have to go back up and spend some time at the airport and get some kosher that's piled up against the fence that's cleaned out as well. Things at City Hall have been going very well. I enjoyed thoroughly the folks that are due to the community coming in and introducing themselves and contrary to our last meeting, no one's been in and been belligerent with anybody. Knock on wood. So with that, we will go back and do the new business. And item one on our new business is to vote on Great West Recommendation for the Water Improvement Bid Approval. And I have a letter from Great West that says we have reviewed the bids received on September seventh, twenty twenty-two from the two contractors for the Dog Reference Project. With this letter, I am transmitting a copy of the tabulation of the bids received. Mel, did you get a copy of this?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Okay. The law response of bidder is Prospect Construction out of Missoula with a bid of four million, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred fifty dollars for the base and additive alternative one. Our current budget is not sufficient to complete the base and additive alternative, alternative number one. However, utilizing, utilizing eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars of supplemental funding from the State Revolving Fund, S R F, in addition to the existing project funding, it would allow for the awarding of both the base bid and the alternative number one and still provide a small contingency going into construction. Having reviewed the financial capabilities, qualifications and experience for Prospect Construction and it appears they have the capabilities to compete this, complete this type of project, it is therefore my recommendation that the city award contract for Phase One Water System Improvements Project to con, Prospect Construction in the amount of four million, eight ninety-eight, three fifty pending funding agency concurrence. So what I'm asking for from a member of the council is a motion to approve contingent upon S R F funding. Of the eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar additional funding, all but roughly somewhere between two thirty and two fifty will be forgiven as part of a grant. So it's two hundred another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars max and out of our budget that we have to deal with in our, in our rates and stuff. We talked about putting off, but so. So I would move that we approve the bid recommendation contingent on S R F funding. I have a motion from Councilman D.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilman Kukoli. Our concern was we looked at rebidding it. We looked at several other things, but things aren't getting cheaper. And I want this, I want the public to know that had the goalpost not been changed on us and under the original ARPA dollars that were given to the county where we were, at the city where we were expecting to get five point eight million dollars, we would not be in this if the state government.
The governor.
The governor's staff, the local folks did not change the goalposts on this. He took from five point eight down to two million. So anyways. Mel, any questions? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I will get that paperwork signed and out the door. So we will issue the award and then we will probably issue, not issue a notice to proceed until spring. I know that Prospect wants to get some of the stuff ordered now while they can.
Well, and that way they might have it by spring too.
Yeah. We are putting, preparing some areas for them to store some equipment, store some products for the winter as well.
Okay.
Mr. Rich, we're at the point in the meeting where we have comment from the public. Anything?
Um, no, just everything to go through online, but.
Well, you have plenty of time, plenty of time to think about it. Mel, do you have anything for the good order?
It's like I should, the art wall was very lovely.
I heard the.
Very well amended too.
Yeah. Some beautiful art at the bank.
October, they are sold out for Friday, for Saturday night. If you take a slep or ones interested.
One other thing that popped in my mind. Had a meeting with Code Red.
Yeah, thank you.
And the city is looking at purchasing our own notification system for people.
Okay.
So that we have a phone tree in place. We can go notify as little as one house to a radius of ten miles within the city. Tough part is it's information in is what you get, you know, so you have to people's cell phone numbers. You can do a cellphone, landline, email, social media, phone blast, like text messaging, text messaging, like an Amber Alert and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
We are meeting with the county on October the twelfth to talk about their code red system and how they, what they do and their access to it.
Potentially to get access instead of trying to shell it or.
Well, their, their program is only for emergencies. Okay, our program that we're looking in to be, to be transparent is all get out. We're gonna split it with the city of Fairfield, town of Fairfield. So it's going, the city of Shoto will have their own dashboard, town of Fairfield have their own dashboard. We have unlimited operators with access to it. We can record our own voices to do our messages. You could do, you know, Siri type voices, things along those lines. So we're gonna sit down with the county, see what, you know, their stuff and figure out. Yes, sir.
So who would? So you said unlimited activators. You're talking unlimited. So, so we could have any number of people that could send out an alert. So you could, Jody could, Mike could.
Yep.
Okay.
Fire chief, good. Sheriff, good.
One person out of the whole town.
Those two are you.
I don't, I don't want, we could call again. This is Councilman Kukoli. We can give access to Chad.
Yeah.
Chad Daniel.
I, I think they would really appreciate that. Actually, Daniel caught me on the street sooner yesterday or Friday. Just asked me how were things? And any concerns like, like he. And any concerns like, like he, he stopped, stopped me. So yeah, he said, we're, we're trying to get on everybody, but still busy, but it was really appreciated that he did that.
Yeah. Code Red said they would help set us up with data, all that stuff. And I was very impressed, as was Mayor Taki. He came up and we sat down together and did this meeting and.
This has been through the Code Red system. Same, same thing. Okay.
Okay. We will go from there. If nobody's got anything else, I'll get you guys adjourned and we're, we are gonna go October 4th.
Okay.
At 5:30 and then I will take off thereafter to go join Tom and Jody ladies and cities in towns in council.
10:04.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Good night, Shoto.